I'll call this meeting to order of the organizational common council meeting, City of Berlin, Wisconsin, Tuesday, April 15th at 5:00 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Boy.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Cruzball.
Here.
Stubby.
Here.
Nigbur.
Here.
For five. Thank you. And then we will start with a ceremonial swearing in of mayor and other persons.
Okay, we'll start with Madam Mayor. The first woman mayor of Berlin will be swearing in our current woman mayor of Berlin.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Katrina Burgess.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of mayor.
To the office of mayor.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the said office.
Of the said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It has been my privilege to do this 20 years after I was sworn in.
Thanks, Bobby.
They come to the middle.
They just come to the middle?
You can stand right there.
Okay. Should we go in order, Ward 2?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Should I do it again? I, Katrina.
I, Victoria Hill.
Have been elected or appointed.
Have been elected.
To the office.
To the office.
Of older person.
Of older person.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I don't remember doing this last time.
Special.
I feel like we do it different every time, so. I may as well repeat this.
Okay. I, Katrina.
I, Katrina.
Have you been elected?
Have been elected.
To the office of older person?
To the office of older person.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Ward 7, last one. Okay. I state your name.
I, Victoria Cruzball.
Having been elected to the office of older person.
Having been elected to the office of older person.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's everybody's cue that wanted to go.
Thank you all for coming.
And then everybody leaves.
Have fun.
Okay.
You sleeping too?
Chief, you couldn't wait another minute? Oh, okay. Valid.
They do seem like a rowdy bunch.
Those kids. Well, fun. They didn't want to stick around for the fun stuff.
Okay. We will be moving on to the older person orientation. So Eric, I think this is you.
Fantastic. I can't imagine why the room cleared when, you know, you're going to get a lawyer's presentation here. Jesse, do you know if I'm able to share my screen? I don't see an ability to do that.
I think so.
I'm just sympathizing with you having to look at a giant picture of my head. I would give you something else to look at if I could. So I, just to kind of set expectations, I'll tell you what I'm thinking and you can tell me if that's what you're thinking. I'm thinking I'm going to talk for about an hour. I'm going to cover a number of different legal issues in that hour, and I can take your questions at any time. You can wait till the end, or you could ask them as we go. Is that is that roughly the way you see it?
They're just messing with the visual, but.
Okay.
I'm wondering if he needs to be like a co-something.
Like a host?
Yeah, a co-host in order to be able to share screens. Can you try and share and they can approve it? Can you hit, is there a share option for you at all down on the bottom?
There isn't a share option, no.
I wonder if he needs to be a co-host. Eric, do you happen to see an option now? They changed a couple things.
No. Yeah.
You don't want to stay for an hour? Katrina, will you get a picture while Jesse's messing with that for Paul? Sorry, Eric. We don't belong.
Can Josh and I have a picture?
Oh, I do have a share. I have a share now. Here we go.
There we go.
You working?
Yep.
Great. All right, are we ready to go? Does that expectation, is that what you're thinking? Do you want me to go shorter? Probably not anyone wants me to go longer.
Anybody have any?
Roughly, you have same expectations here?
I mean, we, I read it all. Are you going to just read through it all, or are you going to click note it?
No, no, it's way too much for that. I'm going to hit some high points and allow anyone to ask questions and, you know, it may be less than an hour, but I just don't want people to be surprised if it is an hour. Or you can just tell me, Eric, keep it to a half hour, and that's what I'll do. I've done this many, 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 many times, so I can, I can fit the time that you allow.
I feel like a half an hour is great if we could spend a little extra time then on what the hearing will be like. I think that would be beneficial, but the rest, if we could keep it a little bit shorter, most of us are very familiar with these roles, so.
Perfect, so I will aim to be done by 20, roughly 20 to 6. So what we're going to cover are laws that apply to you because you're a public official. And some of these laws are not readily apparent, and so it's important to revisit this. It's not, this is not to be considered, oh wow, we screwed something up and the lawyer now thinks he needs to educate us. It's not that at all. This is, this is something I routinely present. A lot of my communities do it every single year just to get refreshed on some of these laws. And the reason is, if you open the newspaper just about every day, you'll see some community somewhere who has violated one of these laws or is accused of violating them. And that's a big problem. And we are defending cases around the state of Wisconsin right now, today, on violations of these laws. So I want to try to make sure that you're aware so that you can avoid falling into a trap. Start with the public records law. The first point is, you are a public records custodian. The public records law applies to you as a, as a public official. It's not just the clerk, it's you. You are a public official, you are authority. If you have public records, you are obligated to maintain those records. Point number one in this 20 points, this comes from the state law, and this is quoted in every court's decision on a public records issue, and there are many cases. "The public records law shall be construed in every instance with a presumption of complete public access consistent with the conduct of governmental business. The denial of public access is generally contrary to the public interest, and only in an exceptional case may access be denied." We operate under a microscope. There's very little that we have that is not available to the public. Number two, "A record is any material on which written, drawn, printed, spoken, visual, or electromagnetic information is recorded or preserved, regardless of physical form or characteristics, which has been created or is being kept by an authority." So you send an email, that's a record. You send a text, that's a record. You send, you receive a text about your governmental business, that's a record. You get a phone message about a governmental business, that's a record. It has to be maintained. If the clerk doesn't have it, you can set up a process where it's given to the clerk, and the clerk can maintain it for you. But otherwise, you have to maintain it. You have an obligation to maintain it for seven years. That's the general rule, is seven years. There are a few cases where it might be different, but you should assume seven years. If you get a records request, a response is required on point number nine. It's required as soon as practicable and without delay. If you get a records request for something on your phone, on your computer, if it comes to you, please reach out to staff and let staff help you. You may have an obligation to respond. It may be that the clerk can respond for you, but it can't just be ignored. It has to be dealt with. There is a balancing test, point number 15. I don't know if I'm sharing my, more than I mean to here, but there's a balancing test that requires weighing of the public interest and disclosure of the record against the public interest and public policies, against disclosure. That's not something that you probably typically encounter. You have to provide a written response, though, if you're going to deny any record. Request. As a local public official, if somebody's requested a record that's about you, before that's released, the law says you are to be given notice that this record's going to be released. You are not able to prevent it from being released, but you do have an ability to augment the response. So say there's a public record of you being, I don't know, let's say, stopped for an OWI. Okay? It, it's going to look bad, but it has to be released. You get notice that it's going to be released. You can provide to the clerk something that says, here's what happened, here's the real story, XYZ. And that, whatever you say in that augmentation has to be released along with the record. That's, that's a statutory requirement. Providing records is just a cost of being, doing business as a, as a government. You can recover some costs, but it's not really going to cover everything. You can recover actual necessary direct costs for making copies. That used to make sense when we were running photocopies. Now, most records are provided digitally, and there really is, it's hard to to provide, put a number to that. What's the cost of emailing a PDF? But there is time consumed, unfortunately. Unless, this point number 19, if finding the record is going to take a significant period of time, and it's going to cost the government more than $50 to find responsive records, then you can charge costs, and you can require prepayment. So before you actually incur that cost, our recommendation is that you would provide an estimate, make them prepay, and then only if they prepay would you engage in trying to find the documents. Public records law, as, as your staff is aware, is a day-to-day thing. It's, we get records requests all the time. My office is responding, helping clerks respond to records requests all the time. It can be quite a burden. So the biggest takeaway there is you are a public, as a public official, elected official, you have obligations under this law. Things that you might have never thought were records are records and need to be maintained. Includes social media, anything electromagnetic information recorded or preserved regardless of physical form or characteristics has to be maintained. That's all I'm going to say on public records. Any comments, questions, concerns about public records? Let's go into open meetings law. The main point, again, is that you're subject to open meetings law. You are, as a public official, bound by these laws. And penalties apply for violation. Start with the general purpose. There's a couple of quotes from the statute here that our courts return to again and again, basically saying that the public is entitled to the fullest and most complete information regarding the affairs of the government. And to that end, you are obligated to comply with the open meetings law. So who is subject to it? The law applies to all governing bodies. A governing body means any local agency, board, commission, committee, council, department, or public body corporate and politic created by constitution, statute, ordinance, rule, or order, or formally constituted, a formerly constituted subunit of any of the foregoing. We get issues sometimes when matters, the council refers a matter to ad hoc committee, not intending for it to be a governing body. It might have one alder person on it plus two private citizens. And, and the thought was, well, they're never going to, it's not going to be a quorum of the council, so it's not a governing body. But it is, because you created it. And so those three people, even though two of them are private citizens, they constitute a governmental body. They have to comply with this law. What is subject to the law? "A meeting means the convening of a governmental body for the purpose of exercising responsibilities, authority, power, or duties delegated to or vested in the body. If one half or more of the members of the governmental body are present, the meeting is rebuttably presumed to be for the purpose of exercising responsibilities, authority, power, or duties delegated to or vested in the body." So the burden's on you. Even if you bump into another member of the council at the grocery store, and somebody else shows up, and now you've got three members of the council, that's presumed to be a meeting, because you've got, well, technically, on your, right now, three members is, is going to be subject to the law until you fill that vacancy. Because one half are there, and you then are, the burden's on you to prove that you weren't conducting business. Chance meetings are not, that aren't intended to avoid this subchapter, are excluded. But you have to be the one to prove that it was a chance meeting and nobody, no business was discussed. So we see allegations all the time. You know when it happens most is before and after meetings. Somebody will complain, hey, I saw three members of the council out in the parking lot. What were they talking about? It looked like a meeting to me. We just left the meeting, you still have the topics on your mind. It's going to look like you're talking about governmental business, and that's a violation. If there's one thing I could really drill into my councils and, and village boards and town boards, it would be when you leave the meeting, just leave the meeting. Don't chit chat, because anybody watching can make a, an open meetings law complain against you. And you're going to have to prove that you were talking about baseball or talking about, you know, the weather or something, and not talking about that business that you were just engaged in in the council meeting. Negative quorum. A negative quorum is the number of people it takes to kill an idea. Not for it to pass, but for it to fail. So say there are six members of your council. If you have three members voting no, that kills it. So that's a negative quorum. Three members is enough to cause an open meetings violation. Sometimes you have super majority issues, and so you just have to know the numbers. If, if you've got an issue that requires a super majority, there will be times when you can't even talk to one other person outside of a meeting. One other member of the body, that is. Walking quorum is, that's when you, you know, one person talks to one alder, that alder talks to another alder. It might be a different day, it might be a different week, but suddenly you have a quorum or negative quorum of the body united through a series of conversations that happened at different times. That's also a violation of the open meetings law.
And Eric, I just want to interrupt you on that one. That also goes for social media, correct? So commenting on open forums on social media, we have to be careful with how many alder persons are also commenting?
Absolutely, yeah, I'm going to get to that. Technology has changed so much since this law was created, and the law hasn't caught up. And so the courts have to interpret it. And the courts are interpreting it very broadly, as the statute requires them to do. And yes, it used to be, you know, if you look at my outline, it used to be the telephone was the issue. Then it was that email was the issue, and now it's social media. All of the newer technologies, as they develop, they can create these same walking quorum kind of problems, and same quorum kind of problems, you know, directly. If everyone's commenting on the same thread on a social media post, that's a problem. That's an open meetings problem. If it concerns governmental business. As for email, it wasn't that long ago that the Attorney General gave this advice, which is that basically don't use email. Don't use email for your governmental business. That was maybe less than 10, 10 years ago. I think that no government in the state can function anymore without using email. You know, your packets are sent out by email. The world has changed a little bit, but just be very careful. If you send an email to a quorum of a governmental body, nobody should respond. If it goes out in one direction, that's probably okay. It's like sending a letter. There's nothing about the open meetings law that prohibits a letter from being sent to the other members of the council. It's when it goes back and forth like a conversation. So if, if, even if it's a clerk sending it out, or if it's one of the members sending it out, nobody should reply. The other thing about email and a lot of social media is it's, you're an easy target. The proof of the violation is right there. All they have to do is make a records request, or they might be included in the same social media post. They have, they can just hit print and you're done, because it's all there in the email and in the social media post. And, and it's going to be printed in the newspaper, and you're a dead duck for a violation. So practical suggestions, use it for one way communication only. Keep the private conversations private, don't go back and forth. You should have a disclaimer in your email. If you don't already, basically to say, this is meant for the recipient only, do not reply. You need a clear retention policy. The other thing is use discretion. You know, email and social media, they're different from a phone call or different from in person because there's that record. And it's there and it'll be used against you. The other the other thing about all of these sunshine laws is the media loves to fight these battles because the way they make money is reporting on what's happening. We don't have as many reporters watching us anymore like we used to. But when they get, when they smell out a violation, they will pursue it. If you open the newspaper, you know, every week you will see somebody being accused of something. I used to have in my outline headlines, I, I, I think I, when I developed this recently, I had a dozen or more headlines within a 10 day period of sunshine law violations, being accused or being found guilty of it. Uh, jumping ahead, closed session. Closed session has gotten harder this year. Due to a decision, this decision from February 18th. This court, the city of Marinette was represented by legal counsel, very, very good legal counsel, not my office, but experienced lawyers and they were helping him through a difficult issue and leading them into closed session twice to decide some issues on this legal issue. The court found that it was an open meetings law violation to go into closed session. It was under the the bargaining exemption, 19.851E is what they went under. And the court said, there's no record that it was required to go into closed session. This exemption says, you can go into closed session for bargaining reasons when required. And the court leaned into that word required and said, there's no record that it was required. And so the, the court wanted to see something in open session where they talked about as much as they could in open session until they felt like if we show our hand on this issue, we're, then the other side in this negotiation is going to hear our strategies and our position and so we should go into closed session. It's required to close session. So as a result of this decision, when you, when you go into closed session, you should start an open session and do as much of the discussion in open session as you feel like you can. And only then, when it's required, should you go into closed session. Jumping ahead. I don't know if you have issues or concerns about public comments. I do have thoughts on that, but I'm going to keep moving.
We get to set our own time limit for open comments, correct?
You can set a time limit. Just make sure it's very clear. You can set the time, the amount of time each speaker has, a lot of times it's three minutes. You could set the total time that you're going to have for anyone to comment. Sometimes I see a half hour. And it's first come, first served. So those that sign up early, get to speak and those sometimes not everybody that wanted to gets to because you set a half hour total. So the point is establish rules, make sure it's clear. I like to see the rules right on the agenda. Public comment is available for three minutes, up to three minutes for a total of 30 minutes, you know, whatever it is, only residents can speak. Only matters on the agenda or only matters not on the agenda. Whatever your rules are, I say it right on the agenda.
Also, since I've been on council, there's been mayors who have allowed commenting on it and mayors who have not allowed us to comment on it. So that might be something to look into.
As a, as a council member?
Okay.
With the open, and maybe Eric knows?
Yeah. The last mayor did not, but in the past, we have been allowed to comment on it. It just depends who's in the seat. So I don't know if that's something Eric knows or we can look into.
My understanding has always been that it's to be avoided because if there's something you want to talk about, it should have been on the agenda, but I'm sure Eric has a thought on that.
Or a member of the body wants to make a public comment, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That is, that is not allowed. You know, you should not.
They want to comment on the public.
Yes.
Oh, they want to. To the public comment. Are we allowed to respond to the public comment?
Okay.
I would keep it to a minimum. You can't take any action on it. And I think the best practice is, is never do it. Once you open that door, then everyone thinks they're, they're going to get feedback on their comments. And sometimes that's appropriate, sometimes it's not.
And I guess based on the statute, so we were always under the the understanding or it was told to us, but because if it was something that was not on the agenda, we could not comment. However, when I read the statute, I feel like there's a little room for, for discussion. So I guess that's the clarification we need. If we can, we can have any dialogue with them or none.
My recommendation is none. You're exactly right. You're 100% correct. But the, the recommendation that you'll read, you know, from the league and from your professional staff is we should just be receiving the comments. Maybe we'll refer to committee or something, but, but we're not going to engage on it. The problem with engaging is the rest of the public didn't get a chance to hear it. You know, they don't know, they didn't get notice that this issue was going to come up. And they might've had thoughts on it that they wanted you to hear too. So I, my recommendation is that you just hear the comment. You say, thank you very much and, and you move on.
Is that the best verbiage to make sure someone's been feeling validated? Because sometimes I feel like they speak and then it's like, bye. Well, and that's just part of it also being on the, on the slip when they register that they know it's three minutes. And I will try to do a good job of communicating with them because we've often seen that or we've been the ones making those comments that you feel like you just, you gave your all and then you're left with nothing. So I will make sure that we are educating the public when they're making those kinds of comments.
Right. You want to set the expectation. Again, I think you can say in your notice, the, the council will hear from public comments. Those who want to comment, but no action will be taken. And, and the council will not discuss the matter. I, you know, just to set the expectation, I, you can fall into a trap if you do otherwise.
Erica, Victoria had a question. Well, yeah, the first question I had, I think you already answered is whether or not we can ask clarifying questions of the public comment. The second would be if we can't discuss or speak to them or comment about their public comment, can we direct them to what their next step is, to who, what they should do next?
Well, I think that a lot of times that's going to be appropriate. You know, and it might be, here's Jesse, here's our awkward hours. You should make an appointment and, and talk with Jesse about that. And maybe that can be resolved, you know? Refer them to the appropriate staff person, or if it's not a city issue, refer them to suggest they go see the, you know, whoever, county administrator, whatever. I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
All right. So we are at where it was going to be done, but I haven't gotten to the one I really wanted to hit yet. So if you'll indulge me, I want to spend a few minutes talking about our procedures for the residency issue. What I'm skipping is a bunch of state laws that you can read at your leisure about crimes that can be committed by public officials unwittingly. It's worth your time to at least read the headings. I have had public officials charged with crimes for violating these statutes. Some have been convicted and so it's worth taking the time to look through them. But first, I'm not going to do it tonight. What I will do is start with this slide. To point out that you have two different role. I'm sorry.
So I mean, it's reading this, but it already says like the information that informs your decision should only be received at the hearing. Obviously with social media and things like that, things get posted and things, how do you recommend just, I mean, you try to avoid it, but it's, things pop up multiple times, especially in the small community. How would you recommend trying not to receive that information?
Well, if you receive it, depending on what it is that you receive, you may have to disclose that you received it at the hearing.
So for example.
Yeah, I mean,
Eric, just for.
Here's the thing.
Hold on a sec, Eric. Yeah, Eric, so just for example, there's already social media, lots of threads going around currently about that. And so I think that's where she's coming from is that it's already on the community. Yeah.
Well, I have no doubt, but, but don't, don't, don't read it, you know, don't, don't go there. It's not appropriate to be gathering that background. So if you look at this slide, you have different roles as members of the council. You have a legislative role and you have a quasi judicial capacity. On this residency issue, you are in the latter. You're in a quasi judicial capacity. You're like a judge. You must be impartial. If you cannot be impartial or fair to both sides or have expressed opinions publicly in favor of one side, you should recuse yourself. So on that point, if you see it in social media, do not say anything yourself in social media. I mean, can you imagine being accused of a crime and the judge has posted on social media that he, he thinks you're guilty or he, you know, any, any kind of a statement from the judge and social media could reflect a bias. You are the judge. You're the judge in this proceeding. You shouldn't communicate with others outside of the public hearing process. Information informs the decision should be, all be received at the hearing so that all persons have an opportunity to respond to the relevant information. So let's go back to this. This is very end of the outline.
It's in their confidential pack. Um, and Eric, just so people are, the council is aware. Jesse had showed me what a script might look like. So just so that everybody knows, we've been through one hearing, kind of all of us, maybe except for Victoria, one hearing before this and, and my opinion didn't run so smooth. So I was a little nervous coming forward with this. But knowing that there is a, a script and there's, there's more stuff for us that is going to help us through that was a lot easier for me to take because I think this last one was not a great hearing. Or we just weren't educated enough, I feel like, on, on the process, so. And, and when we say script, it's just a process and how it's supposed to go. It certainly doesn't tell you what to say as far as having your discussion and listening to or anything like that. I don't want it to sound like anything's been predetermined, absolutely not. No, no, we just had zero guidance, I think, going up to the last one, like what the process looked like. So I think I myself was nervous going into this because I did not want it to look like a giant circus. So I, I feel a lot better knowing that there is guidance coming to everyone.
Well, that's, that's good. So what, what happened? First of all, let's, let's look at this from 10,000 feet. We have criminals, people who have a criminal record, living in the city of Berlin. That happens with nobody knowing about it. You know, they get out of prison and they buy a house and they live there. I guarantee you, there are people with criminal records living in the city. The reason that sex offenders are kind of singled out with regard to residency is not related to the offender, the offender's offense. It's related to the risk of recidivism. It's this kind of offense. There are some studies that indicate this kind of offense can repeat and repeats more often than other kinds of events. The recidivism rate is, is higher. And so because of that, the council, as is true in a lot of communities, the council decided we want to be, reduce the risk of reoffense by limiting the opportunities for an offender to, to reoffend. By establishing zones where offenders can't be. And basically it's so many feet from places where children are known to congregate. Just so they aren't presented with that risk as often. The goal of this is not to punish offenders. The goal is to protect the children of Berlin. And so we need to stay focused on the goal of protecting children. This is from your ordinance, a permit should only be issued upon a determination that permitted activities the person will not likely lead to disruption of the stated purpose of this article, which again is to protect children. The common council approved a petition for. This is something that the chief and Jesse and I worked on to get a form that makes sense and establishes some factors to consider. These are the factors that the council in approving that form adopted. And these are the things I'd like you to consider as we are hearing the evidence in the case and, and ultimately in making your determination. Consider the nature of the offense that resulted in a sex offender status. So for example, not all of these offenses are the same. For example, if you've got somebody who was convicted of a sex offense when they were 19, because they have behavior with their girl because they have behavior with their girlfriend who was 16. That, I'm not trying to minimize that. I'm not saying that's okay. I'm just saying that that's a different kind of offense than an offense where it's, uh, somebody grabs somebody off the street and rapes them. It's not that the first is, uh, the first is, uh, consensual, but the law doesn't call it consensual because they're not, have had an age of consent. Uh, and that's, but that's a different kind of offense. So number one, consider the nature of the offense. Number two, the date of the offense. Was it a long, long time ago or was it recent? Uh, age at the time of the offense. And if, how different is that from the age today? Uh, recommendation of probation or parole, if there is one, recommendation of the police department, if there is one, recommendation of any treating practitioner, if there is one. Uh, counseling, treatment, rehabilitation of the sex offender. Remorse of the sex offender. Duration of time since the sex offender's incarceration. The support network of the sex offender. Relationship of sex offender and a victim. Presence or use of force. Adherence to terms of probation or parole. Proposals for safety assurances of the sex offender. And conditions that you place. If you would grant, uh, a sex offender to live in one of the prohibited zones, you could place conditions on it. And so the last one is what, what conditions would you impose? These are all ways of asking the question, how likely is it that this guy is going to reoffend? And ultimately, is this the kind of person that this ordinance was drafted to address? Or is this person different? I've had many, many of these hearings. I had one where it was granted, uh, where the offense was between two women. And the woman came and explained what happened. The victim came and explained what happened. And ultimately, the, that body said, okay, that we don't think you're going to reoffend. And granted them the permission to live there. I had one, uh, I've had many where they've been denied because they just were not convinced that they were sufficiently different. Our, our federal courts take a close look at these case, at these issues. There used to be, and I think there still is, a team of lawyers outside of Chicago that look for these cases. And they seek them out the way a, uh, you know, ambulance changes are, are thought of as seeking out cases. Because there's money to be made. If they succeed at all in, in proving up that the civil rights of, of somebody were violated, their attorney's fees have to be paid. The court will order their attorney's fees to be paid. And these lawyers, uh, years ago, in Pleasant Prairie, they were charging $500 an hour. Uh, in, in Waukesha, they had, Waukesha immediately changed their ordinance, let the guy live there, uh, but realized that the, they did that because they realized they had violated it. Even before they had to answer the complaint, they did all those changes. And they still got a $25,000 bill from those lawyers who had run up their fees even to just file a complaint. So it's something, the civil rights are, uh, civil rights are the issue. We have to treat, um, the offender fairly and appropriately and reasonably. And our courts require this individualized consideration of determining whether we believe, uh, they are a risk that's different from the risk presented uh, that the ordinance is designed to protect against.
And, and please know the council packet that you re, that you've received is a confidential packet. Don't share that with anybody that is for the council only. There will be a non-confidential version, um, on, online that the public can, can view. But the packet that you have is, is confidential.
And at this meeting, will there be public comment?
Absolutely. Anyone who wishes to participate gets to. But the, um, applicant has the first opportunity to provide, um, witness evidence, that type of thing.
Do they need public comments for this? Cards?
Yeah. We'll have a, a sign and sheet, I think, rather than, than cards for this meeting.
The applicant will present, uh, there will be an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And not by everybody in the room, but by the, the council. We have invited, uh, police chief to present his report. Uh, questions can be asked of the police chief. Then the public will be allowed to speak. Typically after the public is done, we will then allow the applicant another chance to speak, to address concerns that might have been raised. Once we're done, a decision will have to be made. Uh, it, it should be a carefully worded decision in writing. And so there's a little hurdle there of how do we reach the point of having a written decision? And we could talk about that. It, it, you know, it's possible that it would be so clear. You know, maybe he doesn't show up, for example. It might be so clear that, that we don't need to do the written decision. But if we need to do a written decision, what we would probably do is get some direction. Uh, we, we would probably go into closed session. Uh, and the council and I would discuss it and, and your staff and come up with, uh, some direction. Where are we, where are we headed with this? And then your staff and I will prepare a written decision and it'll come back at another meeting. Probably, I think Jesse suggested the next council meeting to, to act on uh, the written decision. Any questions about that?
Anybody have any?
Everybody that wants to talk from the, uh, the community and signs up to speak, there, I mean, that could go on for hours, right? I mean, just let them run.
I mean, I would, can we limit the three minutes to, on that for a comment? Or what do you suggest, Eric?
I think three minutes is appropriate. I, I wouldn't limit the total time necessarily, but I think, yeah, you could limit it to three minutes.
Yeah, I think so too.
Don't, don't limit the applicant though. The applicant gets to take as long as they want.
Right. And Jesse, is your outline for how that meeting will go in here? Or is that something you're to provide to us?
It is, it is in there, yes. And again, these are confidential, keep them to yourself. And it may, do not discuss amongst yourselves either. These are, because this is your information, but you, you know, all the deliberation needs to be here in front when you can hear from all parties and then make your decision, so.
Also, Eric, since this is, um, obviously my first time in this role and I was an alderperson for four years who was pretty vocal, what does the mayor get to say in this? Do I get to have just as much input as the alderpersons or no? I mean, I know I don't get to vote, but do I get to have any input?
Yeah, you can ask questions, of course. Uh, you're a member of the council too. Uh, you know, in the event of a tie, you get to vote.
Right. Yeah. Does anybody else have any other questions or need anything clarified before the 28th? No?
Six o'clock on the 28th, yeah.
And Eric will be here in person, correct, Eric?
That's right. Yep. I, I guess, you know, I can't emphasize enough that, that you're the judges. And imagine if you were appearing in front of that judge, how scrupulously you would want to ensure that judge is being fair. So don't make any public comments that might express a bias in writing or orally. Uh, you, you need to be fair and impartial. You need to show up that day ready to be fair.
Okay. Anything else from Eric? Or Eric, do you have anything else that you want to talk about tonight?
That's it. That's all I had. And there's more in the packet, um, but that's for your, uh, reading pleasure.
It's a very dry read, yes. All right, well, thank you very much, Eric.
You bet. I'll see you on the 28th.
Sounds good, thank you. All right. We will move on to the mayoral appointments with council confirmation, recommendation. Sorry, 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 sorry. Geez, off to a bad start. Election of council president. Are there any nominations for council president? We'll need a nomination and then a second.
I would like to, I apologize, I know I'm brand new to you guys, but I would like to nominate myself for council president. Um, I've served for over a decade on Park and Rec, leading that. And I've had the opportunity to serve on quasi judicial boards, it's like the Board of Appeals. And I had the opportunity, rare opportunity, one or two to run those. So just because I have experience, somebody who can step into that role and not falter just to hold a meeting down on the, hopefully, nonexistent chance that you won't be here, I would like to nominate myself.
Okay.
She can't nominate herself on nominate, Victoria.
You can't nominate yourself?
I don't know if you can. I'm not sure. Then I'll second it. I've seen you speak and you do a great job. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? If not, then I will call a roll call vote, please.
Stubby.
Yes.
Nagbir. Boike.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Frisball.
Aye.
Hey, Terry. Bye, bye.
Great. You guys are jumping right down.
I was expecting a couple of their nominations.
Great. All right, so Victoria will be our new council president. Um, we can move on to our mayoral appointments with council confirmations. The recommendation is, uh, motion to approve mayoral appointments as presented. Um, if you guys can find where we have our new appointments in there, um, I've kind of tried to get everybody's input as best as I could um, to fill those slots. There are a couple of, um, empty slots, looking at cemetery board and sewer and water commission. And based on some of my previous, um, spots, um, I feel like those are, would be very easy ones for a new alderperson, should we fill that sixth ward? Um, is anybody have any other comments or is everybody okay with what is presented?
I'll make a vote to, uh, accept the, approve the mayoral appointments as presented.
I have a question. It says current incumbent on Park and Rec. Is that because I was on Park and Rec or are you making me the liaison to Park and Rec?
You're on the back.
No, you're, no, you were, you were who was currently there. You're listed as not being reappointed and then the new appointment is on the other end.
Oh, okay, I see.
So on the very back side is, so Josh is B C D C, Victoria is going to be committee on aging, Christina is library board and Parks and Rec, Terry will be plan commission. And then, um, Sam will be police and fire commission, leaving sewer and water and cemetery board open.
Okay.
Right.
So we have a motion on the table. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
You're, I'm so sorry. Your new appointment on Park and Rec commission, shouldn't that be Kayla Reeves, not Kami?
No, these are liaison appointments. So our liaison, uh, for us as a, no, you're on the back looking right here, planning commission is Kayla.
Because she's Park and Rec, but up here on Park and Rec, it says Kami Jorg, Kami Jorgensen instead of Kayla Reeves.
Well, Kayla is already on that committee. These are reappointments, so they're up for a reappointment for this year. She's already on, she's not due to be reappointed this year.
I'm, I'm afraid I don't understand, so I apologize.
So this list, the different committees have, you know, depending, six, seven people on them. More, normally two or three of them are reappointed every year so that everybody doesn't cycle off at the same time.
Right.
Kayla is, was already appointed for the coming year with her current cycle.
Ah.
So she doesn't need to be appointed to the commission.
I understand. Thank you, thank you. Sorry.
Nope.
My brain was blinking what we were doing here.
Okay, so we have motion, a second. We've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to number six, which is the alderperson vacancy appointment process. Um, per policy on fi, filling the mayor and common council vacancies, the council will appoint a person to fill the vacant alderperson position until the position is filled following a special election. Ward six race will be in the spring, um, on the 20, on the spring 2026 ballot and then on the spring 27 ballot as well as even numbered ward races are normally held in unnumbered years. Um, so we need to determine appointment process per policy on, um, filling the mayor and common council vacancies to include submission of board, committee, commission and common council application forms and resume by the qualified persons to the city administrator by email, mail or in person. And then by a date to be determined by council, which we need to do tonight. And then common council interviews of qualified applicants will be held at the nomination meeting, also set by us. And then we will determine interview questions to be asked of the applicants by the council at that nomination meeting as well. So we need to come up with a date.
Just to clarify, oh yeah, that's right. Just to, to clarify, um, the earliest that we could get the announcement in the paper will be next Thursday because you have to have things into the paper the Friday prior to the Thursday that you want them in the paper. So I've assumed that, um, if you guys tonight, decide tonight, we can put it in the paper. Look, paper will this Friday so that it can be published on the 24th. So, um, then I threw out some dates that I thought might, might work, um, to actually hold that meeting where you would interview however many applicants come with the questions that you determine tonight and then make your selection. If none of these work, then we'll have to come up with another date. But I'm, I'm hoping to put in the paper the date that they need to have their application in, which would be at least a week prior. And then the date of the actual, date and time of the actual meeting. So people know how much time they have to decide, prepare their materials and make sure they're available to come.
I think we, we need to fill this ASAP. So I think the soonest, um, uh, date to get it in the paper would be great. Um, so that would be that soonest in the paper, April 24th? Is that the one?
Yep, that's the soonest I can get it in the paper for whatever date you choose.
Okay. So April 24th, paper. Um, we need to decide then the nomination meeting date and then when applications are due.
Yes.
Does anybody have any preferences on, um, the meeting date?
Can we tack it on to a council meeting or committee of the whole like we did with Terry?
It would be nice not to have to have us another meeting.
I think, um, I will have to reread it, but I think what we would have to do is just post it as immediate.
Special before or?
A special before or after and post the other one immediately following. Um, if, if that's,
So based on that, could we do the, the 13th then? Or do you have a preference of, well, the 13th? Okay.
That will be here this week.
Guess it's the 13th.
So the nomination meeting on Tuesday, the 13th. And are we doing this prior to the meeting then? Like a 6:30?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I, you could, you could do.
6:30 will be long enough?
Uh, it depends how many applicants you get. I mean, I had put on here five just so that you'd have some space in your calendar. I don't think, I don't think you're going to get more than two or three.
I'd, but considering that, yeah. I'd say six is plenty.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then if there is a, I will, I will post it as the next meeting at 7:00 PM or immediately following if it goes past 7:00. But we can't start early if that makes sense to people.
We'll just all stand around and talk. Just kidding. He's not on there.
Unless you want to.
We could bump it to 6:30.
I really think 6:30 is fine.
You want to do 6:30?
6:30.
6:30? Okay.
I just, and honestly, based on, I've literally gone up and down the maps. I know, I'd be happy if we had one. And then we just need to figure out when the applications are due then. Is that just the?
Um, the policy, I think, says at least a week prior. So I put the six on there for discussion, but if you guys feel longer.
So May 6th then, since we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if nobody applies?
Well, then we cancel the meeting.
Then redo this again.
No, I mean, for the vacancy.
Yeah.
How does that, oh, we just keep doing it?
Put it out there again until somebody applies? Yeah. Okay, so nomination meeting on Tuesday, the 13th at 6:30 PM. Apps due by May 6th, which is a week prior. And then into the paper by April 24th.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's also, do we have to decide those questions today? Did you want, you said?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be good.
Everybody get a chance to see, there was a memo in the agenda packet that was emailed? I don't know if that's in the packet now.
Yeah, it's not in the current.
They send in there, but, yeah, I threw out a couple of questions, but these are just suggestions. You can use whatever you feel is appropriate.
Does everybody have them or do you want me to read them all? So some of the suggested questions were, why did you apply to be the ward six alderperson? What did you see as the city's greatest challenge over the next year? What do you see as the city's greatest strength? What would you bring as a member of the common council? And what experience do you have in local government, government and policymaking?
Those all sound great.
I know. Look, can we pick, do you want them all or like are we picking three?
I like the experience one.
Me too.
It would depend on how many applicants we have, how many, I think.
Well, for sure, why did you apply? I think that's a great one. I mean, honestly, we get, what do you see as the city's greatest challenge and the greatest strength?
You want to combine that?
Sure.
Sure.
Question?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I feel like also, what would you bring as a member of the common council? And the experience are kind of hand in hand too, but. Does anybody have a preference? What do you bring as a member? Or what experience do you have in local government?
Because a lot of people step up to the plate that have never been in local government, it might be more soft approach to say, what do you bring to the table?
Yeah. Because 99% of them might not have any experience.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so what would you bring as a member to the common council?
I don't mean to be picky, but can you guys maybe do a motion to set that meeting for? And then?
I'll make a motion to set the vacancy meeting for May 13th at 6:30 PM.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else on that that you need from us?
I, I don't think we need a motion on the questions if you are comfortable. So what I have is, why do you apply? Why did you apply to be the ward six alderperson? And what do you see as the city's greatest strength and weakness?
Yeah.
And then what would you bring as a council member?
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 6:15.
Oh my gosh, I get to go to karate tonight. I didn't even expect that.
Sugar plum, Terry, if you don't have a quorum. You'd have a quorum as long as the rest of us are up. It's active quorum.
Is it active for, are you sure?
Pretty sure it's active quorum.
If you're right, then. Right, it's a connection.